What's over there?
Good to go.
Um, yes.
Township Porcebony Troy Hills, regular meeting, council meeting, July 17, 2012. Adequate notice in this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of open public meeting law, filed a notice in the office of the township clerk, posted a posting and a meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building, December 15, 2011, where it's remained posted since that date. Legal notice appeared, bold daily record star ledger was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers, local radio stations, December 19, 2011. Note, council meetings are videotaped, aired on cablevision, public access, channel 21, 2:00 PM Sundays, also available for viewing at www.porsebony.net. Roll call.
Mr. Carrify.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Farrar.
Here.
Mr. Vigilante.
Present.
Council President Stanton.
Here. Also present, Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Minister Dr., John Inglesino, Township Attorney, Peg Mader, Acting Clerk. Please rise for the flag salute. Birthday boy, Mr. Vigilante, would you?
Oh, happy birthday.
Thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Upcoming meetings. August 14, 2012, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. August 21, 2012, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited, public participation. Mayor's presentations, ward and proclamations to state track champions, Bria Sanders and Stephen Burke.
And the glasses. Does that mean I have a cold door? Got this one, 20, which one are you doing, 31?
That might not be turned on.
That's why it's broke.
No, it'll turn on.
Stephen, would you like to come up? I'm gonna read this Township Porcebony Troy Hills proclamation. Whereas Stephen Burke, a 2012 graduate of Porcebony High School, is a track and field specialist. And whereas through hard work and dedication, Stephen Burke completed the 2012 season with accomplishments that include selection of the Morris County All-County Team, All-Daily Record Team, First Team, All-Group Two First Team, All-Morris First Team, and All-State First Team. And whereas Stephen Burke excelled on the state level as a javelin throw champion at the NJ SIAA meet of champions and won the Group Two Javelin Throw title, earning a new group record with a mark of 209 and 11. Stephen succeeded as the Group Two North Two State Sectional Javelin Throw Champion by establishing a new group record with a mark of 205 and 10, and where he also finished as the Discus Champion. And whereas Stephen Burke represents the outstanding tradition of excellence of our community's student athletes and unwavering pride and spirit that are the heart of Porcebony community. He is the record holder of the Porcebony High School Javelin Throw, the 2012 Porcebony High School Male Scholar Athlete, and ranked sixth in the nation in the high school national ranked javelin. And whereas Stephen was recognized as the Morris County Athlete of the Year, Morris County Javelin Throw Champion, and was the participant of the team that won the Morris County Javelin Throw Relay Championship. Stephen is also committed for setting the new group record with a mark of 205 and 10 as the NJAC Javelin Throw Champion. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbario, Mayor of the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills, sincerely thank Stephen Burke for his steadfast discipline, devotion, and determination to succeed, and do hereby extend congratulations for his athletic achievements and pride that he has brought to his school, his coach, his peers, and to the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills. Stephen, dated this 17th day of July. Congratulations.
Want me to read, Jamie? Want me to read the awards? Awarding proclamations to Officer Anthony Morelli, Officer Luke...
No, 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 no.
Oh, oh, Bria, sorry. Disregard.
And promotions first, start the way around.
Oh, okay.
We didn't forget about you. Wanna come up? Okay, please have a good... I want you to show us to your father, nobody's an evil fan. That's for you. The Giants won the Super Bowl, I think your dad realizes that after he told me the Eagles were gonna win, but that's beside the point. Township of Porcebony Troy Hills proclamation, whereas Bria Saunders, who just finished her sophomore year at Porcebony High School, is a track sprinter and member of the field hockey team. And whereas through hard work and dedication, Bria Saunders completed the 2012 track spring season with accomplishments that include selection to the All-State Second Team, All-Group Team, All-Group Two First Team, All-Daily Record First Team, and All-Morris County Team. And whereas Bria Saunders excelled on the state level as the NJ SIAA Group Two 100-meter dash champion and 200-meter dash champion, and earned consecutive NJ SIAA State Sectional Group Two North Two 100-meter dash and 200-meter dash titles. Bria anchored the NJ SIAA Group Two North Two Championship Champion, four-by-four meter relay, establishing a new Porcebony High School record of four minutes and two seconds. I'm not doing any of that 10 stuff. And whereas Bria Saunders represents the outstanding tradition of excellence of our community's student athletes and the unwavering pride and spirit out of the heartfelt of Porcebony community, where she is the record holder of the Porcebony High School 100-meter dash with a time of 12 seconds and 11 tenths, right? And whereas Bria was recognized as Morris County Sprinter of the Year, Morris County 100-meter dash champion, Morris County 200-meter dash champion, a member of the Morris County Relay Small School Division Championship Team, and a member of the Morris County Four-by-Four 200 relay... I don't mind, woo! You can run. Establishing a new Morris County record of one minute and 42 seconds, .55. As a member of the NJAC Small School Division Championship Team, Bria won the 100-meter dash, establishing a new group record of 12.69. Won the 200-meter dash, establishing a new group record of 25.33, and anchored the NJAC Small Group Champion, four-by-400-meter relay, establishing a new group record, four minutes, five seconds. Wait. Woo, I feel like I did some math there. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbario, Mayor of the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills, sincerely thank Bria Saunders for her steadfast discipline, devotion, determination to succeed, and do hereby extend congratulations for her athletic achievement and pride that she has brought to her school, her coach, her peers, and to the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills, dated the 17th day of July. Promotion of Lieutenant Jeff Storms to captain. I'd like to call up Chief Anthony Dizenzzo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this evening. My name's Anthony Dizenzzo, Chief of Police, Porcebony Troy Hills. This is another evening where I can truly tell you that I'm proud to stand before you as the chief of the Porcebony Troy Hills Police Department. We're here for two separate issues this evening. First, we're gonna recognize officers that responded to a tragic incident in Mountain Lakes. They put their own safety, well-being, and let's put that second to the people that they serve, and they're certainly a tribute to the law enforcement profession, and I'm certainly proud to have you as members of the Porcebony Troy Hills Police Department. In addition to that, we're gonna promote Lieutenant Jeff Storms this evening to the rank of captain. Lieutenant Storms has gone from a bin management position to an upper management position, and Lieutenant Storms certainly brings the traits and the leadership ability necessary to move the police department forward. As everybody knows, the Office of Emergency Management has been moved into the police department. We have collectively decided that the Office of Emergency Management needs to move forward in Porcebony. We've experienced some situations, some disasters in the last year that have made us recognize where we need to move, OEM. With that being said, currently I have been assigned as the Office of Emergency Management Director, and with that requires additional responsibility in the police department. We've identified Lieutenant Storms as the officer that's gonna be assigned to those tasks. I've made a recommendation to the mayor that that position specifically needs to be that of a captain. Leadership and the responsibility commensurate with that position certainly should be of a executive officer in the police department. So this evening, the residents of Porcebony Troy Hills certainly benefit. This will give us the opportunity to better serve the community. We will have an opportunity to have the emergency services in the community work together to improve our response. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, call Lieutenant Storms up?
I'm gonna read first. Before I call Lieutenant Storms up, I prepared something for tonight. Tonight, I am proud to promote Lieutenant Jeff Storms to the rank of captain. Jeff has served as the Porcebony Police Department since August 12, 1988. Officer Storms, congratulations on a well-deserved promotion. Jeff was a terrific lieutenant, and I am confident that he will be an outstanding captain. Officer Storms' promotion is related to the initiatives I have taken to bolster Porcebony's emergency preparedness. As your mayor, I have no greater responsibility than to provide the public safety, and I will do everything in my power to ensure the safety of our residents. The unforgettable horrible events of September 11, 2001 shined a bright light on the importance of emergency management preparedness, or as they say in the military, readiness. One need only read the newspaper or turn on the television to learn of the tragic events requiring emergent response from local governments. One such event took place last year in Mountain Lakes when a disturbed man shot and killed a coworker in cold blood and threatened the lives of others. Our police department participated in bringing an end to that tragic incident. Later tonight, I will honor those police officers for their heroism on that fateful day. The shooting in Mountain Lakes, last year's earthquake, flood, and the October snowstorm caused me to take an in-depth look on how we prepare for emergencies here in Porcebony. I reviewed our ordinances, and I thought about my experience as mayor, dealing with real situations in real time. There are a few things that I've learned as mayor that I could not possibly appreciate as a councilman. First, it is imperative that a person, that there be a person in command and control at the scene of an emergency. This is particularly important in Porcebony because of all the various agencies we have responding to emergent situations: police, multiple fire districts, rescue squads, both paid, and volunteers. All of these agencies are vital to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community, and all have an important job to do. Each has its own hierarchy of command and control, but who takes control of the scene? Who is the field general given direction to all of the different agencies that answer the call? Well, under state law, that person is Director of Office of Emergency Management. It is therefore vital that OEM director not only possess the technical knowledge, but they also have the skill set required to effectively handle emergency situations, that they have what it takes to make instantaneous life and death decisions. And it must have the command and control, presence and leadership skills necessary to lead all of our various first responders to save lives and protect property, and make sure that Porcebony is safe and secure. It is my view that the qualities of that person I just described are the same qualities we look for in our police chief, and that our police department is the most effective place to entrust our emergency readiness. That is why earlier this year, I named Chief Dizenzzo as our OEM Director. I know that the chief possesses the essential qualities that I just described. I personally witnessed that, the chief's demonstration, those qualities, excuse me, on August 28 during the flood. As horrible as that vent was, it would have been even much worse if the chief hadn't been there and assumed the necessary role as a leader. The fact that the chief agreed to assume this responsibility without any additional compensation, that's a testament to his true devotion to our community. The more I reflected on that night of the flood and thought of our emergency preparedness, the more I became convinced, OEM belongs in the police department. After conferring with the chief, it is also clear to me that we need a captain to run the OEM within the police department in addition to his other responsibilities. That is why I am naming a fourth captain to our police department, to ensure that our town is prepared for whatever adversity we may face. Unlike some, I don't have the luxury of being a Monday morning quarterback. Unlike others, I won't play politics with public safety. The people of this great town elected me to lead, to make our government better, and that's what I'm going to do tonight by promoting Jeff Storms to the rank of captain. We are blessed to live in a great community, and the greatest country in the world has ever known. My job first and foremost is to do all I can do to keep our town safe, secured, and prepared. That is why it is vital that the Office of Emergency Management be placed under the leadership of our police department, and that is why I am promoting Jeff Storms to the rank of captain. Thank you. Jeff? Let me just say this about Captain Storms to be very soon. Use the microphone. Okay, thank you. Wesley.
May I?
Let me say this about to be soon Captain Jeff Storms. During the flood in Lake Hiawatha, this gentleman was like my right-hand man, and it was very difficult down there. A lot of things, Deputy Chief Phillips, you know, that was a horrific night, a chief knows, but anytime I needed information, anything, Lieutenant Storms is by my side. And I truly appreciate that, because at times like that, as a mayor, you feel alone, because you're handling the brunt of the whole entire community. But that's why I have a great support team. So, are you ready, Captain? Read the Bible. Well, this won't help unless I get this. Don't worry, it's gonna happen.
I.
State your name.
Jeffrey T. Storms.
Do solemnly swear...
solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the State of New Jersey...
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the same...
To the same.
And to the governments established...
And to the governments established.
...in the United States...
In the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God...
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear...
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially...
That I will impartially...
And justly...
And justly.
...perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
...of the office of...
Of the office of...
Police captain. According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Captain, congratulations. And now I have the honor, and it is truly an honor, to read this proclamation. I'm gonna read it just one time, because there's a lot of "whereas's," there's a lot of individuals we should be proud of here in Porcebony Troy Hills, police officers that we have. The Township of Porcebony Troy Hills proclamation, whereas our law enforcement officers in Porcebony are the guardians of life and property, defenders against crime, and are dedicated to the preservation of life and property. Police officers put their lives on the line to keep communities safe. And whereas, the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills recognizes the remarkable courage of Lieutenant John J. Wieners, Detective Sergeant Rich Nicoletti, Officer Luke Costigan, Officer Anthony Morelli, Officer George Tempehdis, and Officer Michael Regir, who on evening of October 14, 2011, arrived on the scene of a shooting in Mountain Lakes, and without hesitation approached a dangerous situation unaware of the status of the shooter. I'm gonna skip this part here, because I wanna talk about each individual, I think it's important. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbario, Mayor of the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills, do hereby praise Lieutenant John J. Wieners, Detective Sergeant Rich Nicoletti, Officer Luke Costigan, Officer Anthony Morelli, Officer George Tempehdis, and Officer Michael Regir, and all of those involved in the Mountain Lakes incident for their commitment and noble endeavors, and do hereby call upon the citizens of Porcebony Troy Hills to make every effort to express appreciation to those officers willing to sacrifice their lives to guard us against all those who violate the law, dated the 17th day of July 2012. Jay Wieners is not here, so I'm gonna put this aside.
I'll take it.
Detective Sergeant Rich Nicoletti, please come forward. Detective Sergeant Nicoletti has served the township since 1990 in many capacities, beginning as a patrol officer, detective, firearms arm instructor, and member of the department's honor guard, and in 2007 was promoted to sergeant. And whereas he is the recipient of numerous awards, including five exceptional duty medals, eight command citations, a lifesaving award, and two meritorious service medals on the Morris County Detective Association. In 2003, the Porcebony rodeo named Detective Sergeant Nicoletti Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, and was named Law Enforcement Officer of the Year in 2005 by the VFW. I'm so proud that I can be standing up here with you today, Rich. We gotta get Natalie to do her work. Let's thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Officer Luke Costigan?
Officer Costigan is a graduate of the University of South Florida, where he received a Bachelor's of Arts degree in business administration, and a second Bachelor of Arts in psychology. And whereas Officer Costigan was hired as a police officer in 2004, we have since served in the patrol division. He is the recipient of the lifesavings award.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Officer Anthony Morelli. Officer Morelli has a Bachelor's of Arts degree from SUNY Purchase College, and is a 2006 graduate of the Passaic County Police Academy. He was formerly employed by the Passaic County Service Department, and Officer Morelli was hired as a police officer by the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills in 2008. We have since served as the patrol division. He's the recipient of two command citations and an exceptional duty award. Thank you.
Thank you.
I used to look like that. Officer Tempehdis is a graduate of St. John's University, where he earned a BA in criminal justice, business, and is currently pursuing a master's of public administration from Fairleigh Dickinson University. And whereas Officer Tempehdis was a Passaic County service officer from 2005 until 2007, where he received a lifesaving award and a meritorious duty award. He was later hired by the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills in 2007 as a police officer assigned to the patrol division. George, thank you for... I've known Michael for many years. A good man...
You used to look like that.
Who used to...
I look like him now.
Who used to. I used to visit on Christmas Eve, where he was making sausages for Christmas Eve, and we would eat all the sausage before I got to the house. Is that correct?
That's a great story for a fat guy to become.
Anyway, Officer Regir has served the township as a police officer since 1986 in many capacities with the patrol division. He's a firearms instructor, Colt M4 assault rifle instructor, MP5 subgun instructor, and field training officer. He is also the department's Black Bear Office Coordinator, member of the Morris County Rapid Deployment Team, and a police department liaison to the Police Athletic League. And Officer Regir is a six-time participant in the Police Unity Tour, and traveled to New Orleans to aid in Hurricane Katrina relief effort. He is a highly decorated officer with the award of meritorious duty, exceptional duty, lifesaving, and PVA Valor Award. Michael, congratulations. On October 14, I was in Trenton. I think we were supposed to meet with the governor, the township attorney and I. On the way home, I get a phone call that on that day, there was a shooting in Mountain Lakes, and in that shooting, our police officers were involved. My heart sunk at that very moment. I did break the speed limit to get home, I won't lie. It bothered me. I said, "What else could happen in Porcebony?" But one thing I can tell you, I went to the hospital that night where they all were. Everybody was safe. I can tell you right now, as the mayor of the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills, there's nobody more proud than his police department than I am. We have a great force, and they have proven they will protect the public at all means, and you can't ask for anything more than that. I wanna thank all of you. I wanna thank the police department for all you do for the Township of Porcebony Troy Hills. You don't get enough credit, but you deserve it. And that night, you did your job. You put yourselves on the line, your lives on the line to do that job. That's important for everybody to know. It's very important to know, because we don't see that. That night, we got to see it firsthand. But anyway, I wanna thank you all for attending here tonight to be part of this event, and... But anyway, I want to thank you all for attending here tonight to be part of this event, and swearing of the captain and the police officers and the track stars and stuff like that. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Mayor? Mayor Barbario?
If I could just make a, if we could have a moment of silence. There was an officer that recently just passed away, Patrick O'Keefe. He used to work with my dad back in the 70s and 80s. He was a really good man. If I could just have your moment of silence for his passing, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, just to be clear, is to discuss recently filed, ongoing litigation, as well as threatened litigation, against the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Carifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes, but can't we do this at the end of the meeting? Is there a reason to do it now?
Yes, there is.
There is?
Not my call.
All right, yes.
Yes.
I didn't get to Mr. Farrar, but he said yes. Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss personal matters, and whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, then minutes can be made public. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Motion by Mr. Vigilante, second by Mr. Carifi, roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Make a motion to go back into open session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carifi, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Council President Stanton?
Yes. Bits to be taken, August 1st, 2012, 11:00 a.m., sealed proposals for the Hector Road, put in stone, welded steel water sturts, tank rehabilitation. Ordinance, 2012, call in 29, Mr. DePiero.
The foregoing ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on June 22nd, 2012. Be it resolved in an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting municipal consent for the operation of a cable television system within the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, New Jersey, to CSC, TKR LLC, DBA, Cable Vision of Morris, be read entitled only on second reading and a hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Vigilante. At this time, I'd like to open up this ordinance, 2012, call in 29, to the public. We'll be given three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to close the public session. Mr. DePiero.
Whereas the above ordinance was read entitled on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Farrar, roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilman, Mr. DePiero.
Okay. This is regarding the township police ordinance for captains. Just a little background, approximately five years ago, we had a chief and we had four captains. We had no deputy chief. And Michael Peckerman was the chief, and Michael Luther was the mayor. And they came to the Township Council and the mayor, and they begged to be allowed to have a deputy chief. And when agreement was made, we will grant the deputy chief, okay? But then you're gonna have three captains. You're gonna promote a captain to a deputy chief, but then you're gonna have three captains. And that promise was made. I was there, Mr. Vigilante was there, and Mayor Barbario was there when that promise was made. I guess our mistake was we didn't change the ordinance at that point in time to memorialize that. And so now, we had a push for a fourth captain. And the reasons for public safety were all, I completely support public safety. I just don't think a captain was needed for OEM. I think a lieutenant could have sufficed. That was my personal opinion. I disagreed with the mayor and the chief one. The level of the person in charge, not who the person in charge is. So at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion that we modify the township ordinance, Chapter 4, Article 9, Police Department, Paragraph 4-28. And Item C on Paragraph 4-28 says not more than four captains. I would like to modify that to say not more than three captains.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Vigilante, roll call.
Can we have a discussion?
Yeah, we can have a discussion.
First of all, this council president, this is, this would be, I guess, an introduction.
Yes.
They would still have to go through the regular ordinance.
Open for discussion.
What, you want a roll call or?
No, not at this time. After discussion.
See, my feeling is, personally, my feeling is, we're top-heavy. I think we have too many superior officers, and we don't have enough patrolmen on the street. I would much rather put more patrolmen on the street. Right now, we have 64 patrolmen. Divide that between three shifts, subtract some vacation days and some sick days, and we have a drastically low number of patrolmen on the street. And I don't think, I think that's where our effort should be, not in making more superior officers.
If I may respond?
You did. You had your speech.
I know, I mean, I'm responding to your person. I know, you keep going on about, we're top-heavy, we're this, we're that. Well, with three lieutenants down, well, before sergeants down, we haven't made any promotions to those ranks because we realize that we want to hire more police officers. Fact of the matter is, the recommendation from the chief was to make that OEM director a captain. Now, I, to be frank with you, not trying to be funny, but I think the chief knows more about the department than the township council does in regards to running it. And you heard my comments tonight when it comes to preparedness, it comes to safety, it comes secure, to keep the town secure. Fact is this, that I haven't promoted any sergeants. We're losing another sergeant soon. And we had a meeting yesterday, myself, you, Councilman Ferrera, and we come up with an agreement, and two hours later, you change your mind. In, excuse me, in good faith, we shake hands. And we have a good-faith settlement, and I walked out of there, this is what I would expect. But you did not keep your promise, not so much promise, you didn't keep your word. And you stated that to me, that, you know, I have to go back on my word. We had an agreement with the chief, myself, you, and Councilman Ferrera. And then two hours later, you change your mind. Well, I don't have that luxury to change my mind when it comes to public safety. I don't have the luxury to do those things. The fact of the matter is, you sat there in a meeting with us, that I said we would have. And we had that meeting. And then you proceeded to change your mind. I don't know. You told me you got phone calls. Why haven't I received any phone calls from anybody in regards to this matter? Because I think people in the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills look at public safety as a serious issue here in town. Now, I know you made comments in regards that we're not gonna get another 500-year flood. Well, maybe you should go down and say that to the residents of Lake Hiawatha, because I don't believe that.
I didn't make that comment.
Yes, you did. You made the comment. Fact is this, Mr. DePiero, I did what I said I would do. I met with you. We made an agreement, a handshake, we went forward, and we decided to eliminate a position from the table of organization, which would have been a lieutenant, since we're not promoting that lieutenant anyway. But then you changed your mind. I can't sit here as the mayor and say, you're gonna sit here, have a meeting, we're gonna change your mind, and the council wants to report back to them? I can't run the town that way, and I'm not going to run the town that way.
Are you done?
I am.
Okay. And then I'll just refresh your memory, okay? At the last council meeting, you promised not to make any promotions until this council had a chance to discuss this issue thoroughly. Now, that's on the record, you can go play the tape.
It is on the record.
Okay? You promised not to make a promotion.
It's on the record.
Until we discussed it.
But when you-
We just had a promotion here.
Right, you had a promotion because when we met, we had an agreement. And then when we left, two hours later, you say, I'm changing my mind, and your exact words, I have to go back on my word. And that's important to understand. My word. You can go back on your word, but once you go back on your word, I realize then, there's no negotiating.
That gives you permission to go back on your promise?
That, I realized then, there's no negotiating with Mike DePiero. That's exactly what it was.
You go back on your promise, and that's okay?
And the fact of the matter is this, Mike, I think the chief knows how to run the police department better than any councilman up here.
Yeah, but we had a police chief five years ago who said it was okay, he could live with three captains. He was a police chief too, with a record too, okay?
Mike, the fact of the matter is, we had an agreement yesterday. He reneged on it. So that's the fact. I'm not gonna deal under those conditions, so. And I believe, and to this day, I believe in-
Well, there's a motion made in-
I'm just responding.
I'm not done yet, guys, whenever you're done.
And you can vote, and you can vote.
We're gonna go one at a time here.
But this will get, as ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna tell you now, this will get political. Because it's political already.
Okay, next. I'd like to speak on this. First off, Mayor, we agreed last meeting, I don't care what kind of meeting you had yesterday, that was not with the whole council. We agreed that at tonight's meeting, we were gonna discuss this before any promotions would be made. Not what kind of agreement that was made with a partial part of the council yesterday. So as far as, I was under the understanding that at tonight's meeting, this was gonna be discussed prior to any promotions. I mean, that is what you stated. Whatever happened yesterday is still, doesn't matter, because we were promised that we were gonna be able to discuss this at tonight's meeting. Secondly, I heard what you said about a captain's position, and this and that, about needing it to be a captain's position. I recommended the deputy chief be given that responsibility. Okay? You're gonna say the chief knows the department better than any of us? All right. And I think we have an excellent chief. But we also have an excellent deputy chief that I think could have handled that position. And fiscally, as far as the taxpayers are concerned, we need more officers on the street. And that money could have been better utilized for that. That is my position on it. And I don't know why we weren't given the opportunity to discuss this tonight prior to the promotion being made.
Well, let me say this, Councilman Carifi. The fact of the matter is this, we could still hire police officers. You keep using this as, because we promote a captain, we can't hire any more police officers. Well, it was this council that wanted to reduce my four to three during the budget hearing. I mean, so you didn't seem strong enough to want to hire police officers then. But now that this comes to light and becomes an issue, and I think we have an excellent deputy chief. But the recommendation was made by the chief. He's the chief. You're making a recommendation, the deputy chief. Well, you don't run the police department, the chief does. So that's who I take my recommendations from. And I will say this, we have an excellent chief, and we have an excellent deputy chief. I saw that firsthand during the flood. And I can tell you this, my decision is made basically on public safety, and I feel that captain storms, and you know what? I don't want to use his name, because it's not fair to him, because he's not even here to participate. Fact of the matter is, you guys do what you think is right. I did what I thought was right for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, and for its residents, and that's a fact.
Why were we not given the opportunity to discuss it here at this meeting like you were promised last week?
First and foremost.
That's all I'd like to know.
First and foremost.
Wait, can you answer that question?
I'm gonna answer the question.
Okay.
Because when I was dealing with councilmen that you guys recommended to put on a committee, with Councilman DePiero, I didn't even get a, I didn't even get the good faith. I thought it was good faith. We left. I don't have time to fool around with public safety, and I'm not gonna fool around with public safety. I made a decision to promote, I was promoting before this. You guys knew that.
Okay, you don't have time.
And the fact, and the fact is this, and the fact is this, I have to keep public safety. I'm the one that gets, I'm the one that takes the shots. And I made a decision based on what's best for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills. You don't have to like it, but that's what I did tonight.
Okay, you just stated you didn't have time to waste. What was it? You made the promotion tonight at this meeting. You couldn't wait another hour for us to discuss it, and then after our discussion, take it from there?
I don't think you heard what I said before.
You just stated that. You did just state I don't have time to waste.
Councilman Carifi, I don't think you heard what I said prior. That when I met, I met with Councilman DePiero as your representative, and then we had an agreement, I don't know if he brought the agreement back to you, I don't know if he talked to you yesterday or anybody else. But I feel this is the best move for the town. And Councilman Carifi, that's the final, and that's a fact, and that's how I feel.
I know that's how I feel, and I, as you can say, we can agree to disagree, and I disagree.
I agree to disagree.
Right.
Next up, Mr. Farrar. Mr. Vigilante?
Yeah. I guess being the new old kid on the block, you know, my impression from last week was that, in a normal instance, because of the sunshine laws, we're allowed to send two council members with the mayor with lawsuits to get more information, get a, you know, maybe what we call a handshake deal. But it still has to come back to the rest of the council, which I thought was gonna be done tonight. You know, I understand from now that, you know, Mr. DePiero told you one thing, and later on called you and told you another, which he's entitled to change his mind. But even if he didn't change his mind, I'm still fact gathering. I've asked for some information from the administration, which, thank you, I've gotten some of it, and it's still forthcoming. I just don't feel I have enough information, you know, and I'm introducing and seconding this motion for more discussion and debate, and hopefully by the time it goes up for adoption, I'll have all the information I need. You know, no one, you know, when my past hears on the council, everybody said, well, I'm too cop-friendly. Well, I don't know exactly what that means, but it means I support the police department in this town and the volunteers in this town, so be it. If that makes me a bad guy, I'll accept it. You know, the chief, the chief and all the other department heads, they run this town, okay? They tell us in our budget hearings that, what they want, and, you know, everybody's got their wish list. Every family's got a wish list. We have to balance that wish list of what they want with what's good for the taxpayers and good for the town in general. I don't discount what the chief is asking. I just feel cheated, because I did not have the information that, I thought tonight we were gonna talk about this, and I had no idea it was a promotion until about 6:30 tonight. Again, nothing against the promotion. You know, my concern is this now, number one, you know, as all we own, everybody has the right to sue. And I'm not saying people are gonna sue, but I can tell you, past history, in my 14 years of experience sitting up here, excuse me, 12, that there are gonna be some other officers that may have the opportunity to sue. That's my concern. Who pays for that? You, me, us, okay? That's my other concern. I just, you know, Mayor, I understand that, you know, maybe you felt slighted by the phone call, that you got the second phone call from Mr. DePiero. But like anything else, we send two council members out on a fact-finding mission to either assist with you and certain things that'll come back to us. We don't do the day-to-day operations. We control the purse strings, okay? And we have to balance that. And it's a hard balancing act. It's not easy. You know, I don't, it's never been easy, but, you know, we do the best job we can. I have to say that, you know, and I'm just speaking publicly, that I just thought we were gonna be here tonight discussing this ordinance some more, but I didn't know there was gonna be a promotion at 7:30. And again, I just feel like what you said last week, you know, to me personally, and the rest of the council, that's what we thought. And that's not what, that's not the way it went down. And if it went down, just let me finish. If it went down because of the reasons of what you're stated, you know, I just don't think that was in the best interest of anybody, only because I think more discussion. You know, if we discussed this tonight and beat each other up, and next week or next month, you promoted him, actually, you can promote him anytime you want. You don't need a council meeting to do so. You could do it tomorrow morning. I just would wish you would have gave it a little more time for us to have this discussion rather than have it in retrospect, that's all.
All right, and I'll have to respond to you, Councilman Vigilante. Since you are new to the council, even though you're on councils prior, every time the mayor, past mayors make promotions, always somebody's always suing. Everybody thinks they're being slighted. Fact of the matter is, they don't run the town, I do. And I cannot base my promotions based on who's gonna sue, who's not gonna sue. You can't do it. Because every time a promotion's been made, someone files a tort claim, and then if it goes, if it proceeds forward, it proceeds forward. But I gotta run the town the best way I know how to run it. And we have those lawsuits right now, because I made promotions. Someone feels slighted, what am I gonna tell them? Oh, I feel this person is the best for the position. You don't have to like it, what I feel, but that's what I feel. So when you're sitting here and you're- So when you're sitting here, and you make the comment that we're opening ourselves up to a lawsuit, every move we make, there's always somebody ready to sue. And if you want to go look at past tour claims, you'd be surprised at some of the people that are suing. And it's frustrating. And every time I say, "You know what? I'm going to promote this person, but I got to worry about this person suing." Well, you know what? I don't worry about that, Councilman. I worry about running the town. And if someone's going to sue the town for making a promotion, or anything going forward, there's not much I can do, other than the fact that we have to defend ourselves. And the fact of the matter is, that when these lawsuits come, we will defend ourselves. Back to you feeling slighted, that I didn't meet with you. First, let me say this.
No, no, not met with me. The fact that-
No, no, let me finish. I know, I know what you mean, and exactly. We know exactly what each other of us mean. Fact is this, you guys all knew from day one I was making the promotions, because we wanted to make it in February, it didn't work out. And later on, we had civil service approval to move forward. I can very easily say, "You guys are trying to stop me from making a promotion by deleting that fourth captain." Because that's exactly what you're trying to do. "Well, you know what? I wasn't going to let that happen, because I don't think that's fair to the township. It's not fair." You don't try to amend ordinances, "So I cannot perform my duties." That is wrong.
All right. Just to add on to what Councilman Vigilante said, last week's meeting, I asked for a breakdown of the police force from the top right down to the bottom, and I still haven't received anything. So a week later-
And, and I said it was my fault.
Okay. But I'm just saying, that's going to, that's going to be a big part of my vote. So, like Mr. Vigilante said, I'm not ready to go forward tonight on any ordinance either.
Well, here's the copies of where we stand. Here's, and I'll read them to you. Well, right now, we have one chief, one deputy chief, four captains, five lieutenants. We're down three lieutenants. If I'm correct, chief?
I'm going to turn over.
With fifteen sergeants? We're down four sergeants.
Sixteen sergeants.
Well, we'll be, we'll be down to fifteen after, I think, this month ends. We'll be down to fifteen. And that's what I'm going off. But it is sixteen. So to sit here and say I'm trying to make it top-heavy is not true. Because I can promote three lieutenants and four sergeants. And I'm not, I'm not promoting a lieutenant. I'm not reporting, I'm not promoting any sergeants right now. Because we have to, we have to address the patrolman issues. I'm going to give you guys a copy of the-
Mayor, can you just tell me how many patrolmen? I got the other numbers. What's the last one?
Sixty-four patrolmen right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Carr?
Yes. I actually wanted to go first, so I'm going last, as usual. I don't know what the mayor meant, that the council something, I don't know. But I care very much about this town, uh, mayor. But my statement is, I hear a lot of council people, you know, it was like this, and it was like that. This is how I live. I live for the present. As many of you know, four years ago, at 47, I was hit with cancer. Nobody knew that he was gonna, that it was going to hit me. I woke up one day, and there it was. So, my decision is going to be based on the expert. When I had cancer, I wanted to find the best doctor I could. We have a police chief that's been here 33 years. With all due respect to Councilman President Stanton and Councilman Carrifey, I know they're police officers, but I'm going to go for what I heard in the meeting, because I was there at the meeting. And I take the recommendation of the chief, and the chief felt very strongly that we should have a captain. And he went into details why we should have a captain, when you deal with state police and federal, and everything else. So, my statement is, I live for the present, not for the past. You know, we didn't have cell phones, we didn't have computers, you know, 40 years ago, the general public. I believe in our police department and our chief, and that's how I'm going to make my decision when it comes to my vote. Thank you very much.
Mr. Inglisino, reference to the ordinance?
Um, I think there are a couple of legal issues that I would like to look at and advise the council on at the next meeting. And I guess I'll leave it at that for now, because I think there are some legal issues that are, that are raised, that I have not had an opportunity to discuss with the council, that I need to in order to fulfill my responsibilities.
Okay. At this time, we have a motion. We have a second. Roll call.
What are we voting for?
The reduction, as of right now, change in the ordinance.
The vote is to introduce an ordinance that would, that would change the number. The introduction has no legal effect. But I, I do think that before the, the ordinance is, if it, if it is introduced, there are some legal issues that I have some concern about, that I'd like to discuss with the council. Whether you want to defer introduction until that time, or whether you want to introduce now, is up to you. But I, I do have some, as I say, issues and concerns that I, I do need to address with the council.
Mayor-
Well, if we don't have, if we don't have the votes to even have one prepared to introduce, then there's no sense in even having our attorney spend our money giving us a decision. So I say we go ahead with the vote.
My thought press, my thought process would be to go ahead with the vote tonight, and if it is affirmed, then that you have some due diligence, as you're stating, that you need to do, correct, sir?
Well, yeah, there, there are some issues raised in light of the promotion that was made tonight, as well as some other issues that, that are significant from a legal import that I have to look at and advise the council on. And I would suggest that you afford me an opportunity to do that before-
Absolutely. So my, my, my thought process, I would be affirmative to vote to introduce it. And if by the second, or the second reading of the ordinance, if you need more time, we could always postpone the second, but at least this way, we engage the thought process in the public, so.
Okay. And you have the discussion. Roll call.
I just want to make one clean clear, but just because we vote to introduce something, doesn't mean we can't vote to not introduce it, or at the second reading, kill it. Just want to make sure we're clear about that. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. President.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
No.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Affirmative. Okay. Motion passes for the introduction. Consent agenda. All items listed with asterisk are considered to be routine non-controversial by the township council, will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members request, which the case be removed from the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Discussion.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain, or I actually recuse myself, because I have not been present for any of these discussions, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
You got it.
Council President, would you want to do the public hearing?
I was going to do a second. Should I go forward? I was going to do it right after. Should I go forward? Okay. All right. We're going to hold off on the vote on that. At this time, I'd like to open this up to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak.
I came here tonight to speak in opposition to the establishment of a fourth captain, a promotion to a fourth captain. Based on what I had heard at the meeting last week, that promotion would be discussed after tonight's meeting. Didn't have that opportunity, but I do want to say now, I am a strong supporter of the police department. Many of you know that. When I look, or when I counted, I believe that there were 26 superior officers, plus seven vacancies, that the mayor just enunciated. That's 33. And we also heard we have 65 or 66 patrolmen. From a management standpoint, that's an atrocious ratio. Each manager, basically, is managing two people. Unnecessary. If handled properly, I am sure that that can be done. The management can be carried out, and carry out in a highly effective manner, with far fewer superior officers. I am opposed to it, and I am in favor of hiring more patrolmen ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may respond?
Yes.
Art, we are looking to hire more patrolmen, and by the promotion of a captain, that doesn't, that doesn't limit us to promoting more police officers. As I stated before, we haven't promoted sergeants, we haven't promoted lieutenants. And once we get those numbers up, hopefully we can get them up. But one of the problems that we have getting those numbers up is, once we hire a certain amount of police officers, it seems that, that many retire. And I can tell you this much, those are the other things that you have to look at as well. We put four on, four new police officers on this year, and you have four retiring at the end of the year. So in order to make that up, you're going to have to put on maybe eight next year, to get those numbers up. The promoting of a captain does not prohibit you from doing that. And, you know, so that's, that's the point I'm trying to make to you.
Promoting a captain is involving money. And the reason in the past that we have not been up to our 113 police strengths have been, and I've sat in on the budget process, we can't afford it. We don't have the money. We can't afford the extra men. Well, we could afford an extra captain.
And you have one less lieutenant. That lieutenant position doesn't get filled.
One sec, Pat. Chief, if I may, can I just ask the status of the four that we approved for this year? Any expected date?
Do it in the background. Okay.
Papatata, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I also wrote something up tonight, not expecting what happened to happen. So I'd like to read it, just to get it on the record. We've had a problem prior with Captain Phillips, who's the number-one ranking candidate for deputy chief on the civil service list when it came out. Here's attorney. The township has successfully circumvented the civil service rules to fulfill its longstanding agenda of promoting its favored, but less qualified candidate. The town's established practice has been to hire directly down a promotional list. I commend Deputy Chief Phillips for being a man of his word, for not suing the township for monetary gain, but for the job that he was most qualified for, which is my opinion after reading his lawsuit and the settlement. However, the township attorney, John Inglisino, charged the township plus $7,000 for his services. This was an unnecessary expense. Lieutenant Jeffrey Storms was not on the civil service promotion list. That came out in February 2012. Sean B. Clark and Andrew Miller are the only names on that list. Mayor Barbario is again trying to circumvent getting around civil service laws to promote his personal choice and using taxpayer money to do it. How much has the township attorney or labor attorney billed the township to date? Why are we not abiding by the New Jersey Civil Service Commission? Civil Service denied Mayor Barbario from promoting Lieutenant Storms, stating his eligibility had expired. Yet Mayor Barbario appealed this decision, using the township's labor attorney. Why does the mayor feel he has the right to waste taxpayer money? What do we have civil service for? Do you not think that this is not going to create another lawsuit? One more thing to be considered is the State Department of Community Affairs Division of Local Government Services Staffing Analysis that was done back in 2010. This was done to achieve the most effective and fiscal-efficient police department for Precipiny Troy Hills. The only thing Mayor Barbario did from this list was to fill the deputy chief position, and we all know how that went. There were so many other suggestions that could save this town a lot of money, but nothing else has been acted on. I.e., you limit your chief, your deputy. This suggestion was two captains. We have three, so we were already over it. Seven lieutenants, 18 sergeants, 62 officers, 37 civilians. With this in mind, I agree with Mr. DiPiero that we should limit the captains to what we have now, which is three. Therefore, no promotions to captain until there is a vacancy. However, I'd like to ask the council at this time to review the analysis done for our police department, and start implementing some of their suggestions. After witnessing what happened here tonight with the promotion of Lieutenant Storms, I see that the mayor will continue to waste taxpayers' money in his pursuit to promote those of his choosing only. The mayor feel he does not even have to discuss these issues with the town council. Also, at this time, I would like to mention that I was at the meeting where OEM was transferred over to the police department. And at that meeting, and it's on tape, we were told there'd be no expenses, there'd be nothing that had to be done with this at all. Clear ride. Nothing was going to go up. Now, we need a captain. Come on. Put them back where they want. Let them work by themselves. They were doing such a good job. Now, we need a captain. This is, spin it any way you want. Okay? You can spin it any way you want. But when we don't abide by civil service, and this, that, and the other thing, you're slapping people in the face. People that have worked hard and deserve what they're getting. And to me, as I said, this is going to be another lawsuit coming our way. We know it. And if the mayor feels that a lawsuit could be held with anything, that's, that's true. But why do we walk into it when we know that's the possibility? And the possibility is, we're going to be laying out money. Why do we do that to ourselves? Think about it. I really don't want any responses tonight. I just want you to think about what is happening. We've had so many lawsuits alone this year, within the last half of last year. I mean, we cannot continually keep promoting people, or giving people jobs, and having lawsuits. Something has to be done. The town council does have to start getting involved. I know the mayor feels that the mayor is the mayor, and he can do what he wants. But I feel that he was elected by the people to do what's good for the community. You were elected to serve the people, not your own personal agendas. Do what is right for the community only. Please. Thank you.
May I respond, counsel?
Yes.
That's exactly what I did. That's exactly what I did. It was best for the community tonight, number one. Number two, in order for me to make this promotion, I had to have civil service approval, which is what I had. Civil Service gave us the approval to make the promotion. They made the recommendations of the promo, not of the promotion, but it was their opinion letter that allowed me to move forward with it. And I agree with Pat Patacha. You have to do what's best for the community. That's exactly what I did tonight. It's best for the community.
Seeing nobody else come further, I'd like to close the public. Well, hey, guys, do me a favor, don't sit in the chairs. Everybody coming up to the front row?
Just, I guess this is a legal question, more of a conflict of interest type of inquiry. When I served on the planning board, there were instances where planning board members would recuse themselves if they were affiliated with an applicant. I served on a specific instance where Councilman DiPiero and Mayor Barbario recused themselves for an application because they knew the applicant's brother. As a, as a student of the law, you know, I did a little bit of research into New Jersey's Code of Ethics and conflicts of interest laws, and it clearly, the statute and case law clearly establishes that if there's a potential for conflict, a local government official shouldn't, should disqualify, disqualify himself. Now, my, my concern is, and it's nothing personal against Councilman Carifi, but his brother serves as a captain in the police department. You know, I'm not, I'm not accusing councilmen of, of any improper judgment, but the law, from my research, and I'm not an attorney, that's why I defer, you know, to you, Mr. Angosino, is, it, it, it pretty much says, the way I read it, it's only a potential for conflict should disqualify a local government official from, from making a decision on, in his, in his judgment. Councilman Farrar, I think, last application with the liquor license recused himself because he has business in the liquor industry, so that, that makes sense. So I just, you know, that's, that's a concern for me. Thank you.
Do you have time, if you wanna wait for the response?
I mean, the local government ethics law is a statute that governs the ethical conduct of all public officials. There are standards that are set forth in the law, and certainly if you have a direct interest or if a family member has an interest in a matter that is before the governing body, clearly that elected official should, should recuse themselves. The standard is an appearance of impropriety. In other words, if it, if it looks to the reasonable person as though the, the elected official or the planning board member or zoning board official has a conflict, then they should recuse themselves. The question of whether an actual conflict exists or not is, is a very fact-sensitive. I've just enunciated general propositions of law, which I just know from dealing with these issues on a periodic basis for the various public clients that I represent. The question is whether or not, under the facts, that a, a conflict arises, and I'm not prepared to address that question as it relates to any particular councilman this evening. But if somebody feels that there's a conflict, I mean, I don't have the power to tell a councilman that they can or cannot vote on a particular issue, and I can't say definitively whether a conflict exists or doesn't. All that I can do is provide the law and relate the facts to a particular situation, to case law that's already been decided, to give an elected official guidance on whether they're acting appropriately or not. If somebody believes that a, an elected representative has not acted appropriately, then they have the right and the ability to file an ethics complaint before the local finance board, and that is the state board that hears and adjudicates whether or not there's a conflict or not.
That's the legal answer. I've been elected official for 35 years, and, and I've got, I've been involved with conflict questions all of those years, every year, for, for all this time. And the layman's interpretation of that, okay, is that if you or, or your, any of your family members, any relation, okay, would tend to gain from your vote, from your action, okay, then you should abstain and disqualify yourself, okay? In this case, I don't see where Captain Carifi gains anything regardless of what pool does in this case. It's irrelevant to Captain Carifi. So I don't see, in my opinion, I don't see a conflict in this case.
If I may. And Councilman DiPiero, your, your daughter worked for the town for, I don't know, 10, 12, 13 years, I believe, and, you know, I know Mr. DiPiero would abstain when it had anything to do with his daughter. If, my belief is, again, this is not Angosino Vigilante and Vigilante, so please don't accept that, but if it was his brother getting promoted tonight, or if it was his brother that was gonna gain from this, then yes, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Carifi would have the sense of mind to step down. I'm not speaking for him, but I know I would. Like, for example, I'm a carpenter by trade, I'm a contractor. If I do any work for the town going forward, now that I accepted this position last Tuesday night, if I put any plans into the building department, they have to go to an outside town, whether it be Hanover, Motville, East Hanover, because the building department, you know, they'll take my money, but they cannot review my plans. And that being said, I mean, I pretty much know everybody out here intimately and personally. You know, so you gotta, you know, it's called integrity, and, you know, and it's a big term for me, especially in the military. You know, I know half the people in here, I've done business with half the people in here, so, you know, granted, I'm sure if you dug deep enough, you could find maybe a conflict of interest for any one of us up here. But you gotta trust that you elected us to do a job, and that we're gonna do it with the integrity that we have. Otherwise, you wouldn't have voted us in here if you didn't think we had integrity. That's how I look at it. So yes, there's a fine line, but when something's blatant, yes, you gotta step down. But granted, you could sit here all day long, and we wouldn't be voting on anything, and we'd be stalled. So, thank you.
Mr. Angosino, is there such a thing that you could do research so everybody feels comfortable, including Councilman Carifi? Nobody's benefiting today. My thinking is, if the chief left tomorrow, don't shoot me, chief, or the deputy chief, there would be a test out there regardless if we make one or not. And Mr. Carifi's brother would be one of the people taking the test, which I hope he becomes number one on the test. But my point is, I think everybody would feel at ease if we know if there is a conflict or there isn't a conflict. I don't even take the chance. If anything comes within my job, I just recuse myself and I have confidence in the other four council people that sit up there that, the public elected. Thank you. So is there something that you could?
Well, I, I mean, I have in my office, which I can sort of, without a lot of time, provide general guidance to each of the council people, which is probably not a bad idea for you to have. But if any of you have questions about whether or not, you know, there's a conflict or a potential conflict on a vote, please feel free to call me. I'll give you the law, and I'll try to relate your facts to facts that have already been decided by a court, so that you would have proper guidance on making your decision on whether to vote. But ultimately, the decision on whether to take the vote is one that rests with the, with the elected representative.
First off, the mayor states that this was, he didn't want to make this political. It's a known fact that I nominated Lou Valori for this, to fill the council seat, and then voted for Mr. Vigilante when Mr. Valori was eliminated. Mr. Shaw was the mayor's choice for that. So, my opinion, someone had Mr. Shaw come up here and say that. That's just my opinion, and I'm entitled to it. Just because I'm looking out for the taxpayers, and Mr. Hendrickson stated it, a raise to captain increases money, okay? You could take that money and use it towards getting more patrolmen on the street. You keep saying that, well, we can, we can get more patrolmen, but that's more money. So just because I'm disagreeing, when I was elected, when I ran, when I campaigned, I said that I would do what was best for the people, for the taxpayers, and that I would not rubber stamp all the issues. And that is what I'm doing. And now, because I am voicing my opinion, I have people trying to shut me up, which is my, what I believe is trying to happen here. I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. Mr. Farrar brings up the point of, oh, what if my brother goes to take the captain's test, and, you know, then it becomes an issue there? Well, I can say, what if Mr. Farrar's family member decides to go for a job in the town or five years from now? Goes for something. That's strictly speculation. So I do not feel there's a conflict. I have looked into it, because I thought something like this might happen, and I have been advised that there is no conflict, because I am not dealing directly with an issue for my brother.
Well, the, the standard is direct and indirect, specifically in the statute. And it is an appearance of impropriety standard, so it doesn't have to be blatant. And if there's any question about a conflict, I would respectfully ask that you, you, you should seek my advice on it. I'll give it to you. I'll give it to you straight, I'll give it to you honestly. But the standard is direct and indirect, and it is a very broad standard because it's an appearance of impropriety. If there, usually if there's a question about whether there's a conflict, it's usually best not to, not to act.
Okay. So let me throw this one out there. The mayor, did you hire your girlfriend's, your daughter's boyfriend in the water department with no qualifications? Is that a conflict of interest?
No.
Is that something similar?
No.
No?
He's not my, he's not my son-in-law, he's, he, that's, that's a, that's a great comment.
What I'm just saying is that?
My 18-year-old daughter, ladies, um, listen to this. My 18-year-old daughter's boyfriend should be disqualified from a job for the town. 18 years old. Who knows if he's ever gonna get married? That is a joke in itself, to even bring that example up. There's no blood there.
Did you, did you have Mr. Shaw come up here? Did you ask?
I did not have Mr. Shaw come up here.
Well, my opinion is?
I did not have Mr. Shaw come up here.
All right, we're gonna move forward. Next, please. Now, time's up, now. Five minutes from the get-go, start. Next person, please, thank you.
Holy Christ, what a comparison.
That's right.
You're thinking something better than that, councilman.
Oh, I have a lot, believe me.
My name, my name is Bob Venedzia, I live at 102 Brook Lawn Drive. There's been a lot of talk here tonight about safety. Well, occupancy laws exist to protect the health and the safety of residents. They also help to prevent residential overcrowding and unlawful consumption of township resources, and they help to minimize the risk to our emergency responders. I can't, I cannot think of a legitimate reason why anyone would want to waive any of these benefits, but that is exactly what Ordinance 2012:31 attempts to do. In effect, this ordinance creates loopholes around every one of the provisions of the occupancy law, yet an explanation of why waivers are necessary is never addressed. Here are some other problems, risks, and unintended consequences that I see associated with this ordinance. Waiving occupancy provisions exposes occupants, neighbors, and emergency responders to safety issues that would not have existed without a waiver. Many of the provisions contained in the existing occupancy law were probably recommended by our policemen, firemen, ambulance, and rescue squad professionals. Have these emergency response organizations commented on the ordinance? Do they approve of the plan to selectively override their recommendations, thus exposing the public and themselves to unnecessary risk? This ordinance could become, it also could become a source of lawsuits against the township. For example, approving a waiver in one case and denying a similar waiver in another could result in a discrimination lawsuit. The township could also be held negligent for any injury or damages resulting from a condition that would not have existed except for a waiver. Such lawsuits could be initiated by the occupants themselves, their neighbors, or even employees of the township. And who knows how many school-aged children will result from the proposed guest and waiver policies? Each general education student adds $18,000 to our school taxes, and each special ed student could increase taxes by up to $100,000 per student. Any tax increase goes against the stated policy of this administration, and the amounts resulting from this ordinance could be substantial. The ordinance also adds judge, jury, administrative, and enforcement duties to the housing division. In addition, the guest policy and many of the waivers seem to be unenforceable. The net result is an exacerbation of the stacking problem that already exists in the township. I believe that the council had good intentions when it drew up this ordinance, but upon in-depth examination of the details, there are just too many flaws, costs, risks, and unintended consequences associated with its implementation. Respectfully, I ask that Ordinance 2012:31 be permanently tabled tonight. Thank you.
If I may respond?
Yes, sir.
Council president? Okay. The ordinances that we have in place now are very rigid. I'll give you two examples, without mentioning names. There is a home on, on Cherry Lane, a single woman in her 30-somethings bought a house, she, she redid her kitchen at great expense, and the housing authority came to her house and said, "Your, your house needs to be repaired. You have 30 days to repaint or re-size your house." She says, "I just bought a house, I have a mortgage, I just fixed my kitchen," she said, "and I don't see anything wrong with the outside of my house." So, "Well, all right, I'll give you 60 days." And she said, "Well, this is, this is outrageous, you know, I, I can't afford to do this now." So then she, "Where, where on the outside do you see a problem?" So, on the side of the house, there was moss on the side of, of the house. So the woman bought a gallon of paint and a ladder, and she went out and painted the side of the house brown. The rest of her house was green. But just to satisfy this, my point is this, okay? In this case, okay, if this woman could have come to the town, Jennifer Collins, by the way, the head of the department, is the one that would consider these, all right? And say, "We'll give you six months or a year to get it done, not 30 days or 60 days." You know, there was a financial issue there. So I trust Jennifer Collins. She's a very, very intelligent woman. It's not gonna be, these waivers are not gonna be handed out willy-nilly. They're gonna be judged based on the merits of each individual request for a waiver. And some of those waivers should be granted. I've heard cases where waivers should be granted. This was just one. I could give you a lot more. So I, I think we should go forward with this because it gives the residents of our town a little voice in, in what's going on in their lives, what's going on in their homes.
I, I just think that, once you start giving, you know, wavering, it's gonna open up a can of worms. And some of the waivers could compromise safety issues and add, add schoolchildren, you know, what, what determines an emergency?
I seriously doubt that.
Like I said, it often has unintended consequences. You know, we don't, you don't see it now, but I know from experience, it happens, so...
But I know the residents needed some way to appeal some actions from the housing
Hello. I'm Kitty Crystal, and I'm here in opposition of Ordinance, oh, 20 Exeter Street, Parsippany. I'm here in opposition of Ordinance 201231. As I understand this ordinance, any person can apply for a waiver to appeal the limitations of occupancies. Please do not start allowing these waivers. If you allow us to pass, you will never recover from this decision. Every time a zoning law or ordinance is enacted or revised, it has a ripple effect. A simple yes for one person can have an emotional impact or a financial impact on every person through our tax dollars. For every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction. Some examples, the town started out with allowing one apartment complex in 1972, 62. By 1967, we had over 24 apartment complexes with 7,200 units. The Canterbury development was built in the woods and swamp off of Vale Road. The following spring, the people in Lower Lake Hiawatha were boating down their streets. The water had no place to go. Allowing houses to be built along the river, they flooded out. One commercial ratable property to be converted to a house of worship, now we are going on 6th and counting. The loss of the Dodge track to make way for office buildings. Over the years, the apartment complexes have become the bane of this town, which started out as housing for mostly downsizing couples, single people, or couples just starting out in life, has now progressed to the situation we have today. It is a well-known secret that we cannot successfully manage the population in these apartments, and the head counts are higher than they should be. Case in point, a friend of mine recently visited an apartment complex, and he was stunned by the mounds of garbage outside of the garbage containers. He asked the person he was visiting, what's going on with all that garbage? They said they just added new bins, and they still weren't enough. The relative also informed him that the overflow of garbage has caused a problem with rats to the point where there, you can clearly see them running underneath the cars. My point is, far more garbage is being generated in the complex than has not added any new units. Therefore, over the years, obviously, the complex has increased head count. Too many people in, too much garbage out. Monitoring these apartments is not just a nine-to-five job. And here is a picture of one example. This picture of the garbage is in clear view of, um...
Thank you.
Clearly see it from Vale Road. It's 200 yards from the Pride in Parsippany sign. Garbage cans are in the fire lane, and they're up against, they're spilling over, and they're up against this hazardous box. That's just one picture. I have eight more instances. Who will be playing solomon when it comes to the reasons for a headcount waiver? I am sure each and every person feels their reason for a waiver is a valid one. I have quickly come up with 35 reasons as to why someone could feel that they should have headcount, headcount to their apartment, and I have a copy of that if you'd like. If you think you're only gonna have one application for a waiver, think again. Once you say okay to one family, there'll be 100 more with the very same problem. And just how many waivers do you allow for an apartment complex? How many additional children are we expected to pay schooling for? If you average 10 children per apartment complex, that's 240 children. If just half of those are school-aged children, that's $2 million per year. If just half of those are school-aged children, that's $2 million per year. If you approve the waiver system and the surrounding communities do not, then Parsippany will become an invitation for overcrowding. As far as 21342K, the two-month waiver, how are you going to keep track of that? Is it two months from the time a tenant gets caught? They're going to have an 800 number to call and report in, "I have a tenant staying with me"? Do you actually expect anyone to do that? How many guests do you allow per apartment complex? 10, 20, 30? What happens if the guest is a school-aged person? Do we pay for them to go to school, and then we kick them out after two months? Has anyone considered or performed a study regarding the additional drain on our schools' sewer, water, or garbage? Until you have conducted an in-depth study, you have to say no to any or all waivers. Remember, there's no undo button.
Oh, and I have 50 questions about the waiver. I mean, you don't have to answer none, but at least 50.
Just to make one quick comment, Kay, one guest. Send it out.
Would it be appropriate to, I think, I think what the concerns express here about this ordinance, maybe we could table it, have Jennifer Collins at our next meeting and address the public specifically on this ordinance.
Well, Mr. Kev, this ordinance frankly was generated in response to the family that was here a couple of months ago.
Would you be any of it, anyway?
Well...
I heard.
Well, what, frankly, the modification to the ordinance is, was intended to be an interim step in order to be, in order frankly to accommodate a situation like the one that came before the council, which was the direction unanimously from the council that my office received. We don't offer this ordinance as a panacea that solves all the problems. We fully anticipated, as we indicated, that there would be further modification necessary and that we would have all of the stakeholders involved in that discussion, including the apartment owners, the property managers, Jennifer Collins, the council, and interested members of the public, so that we could craft a sort of a permanent solution, which this is not intended to be. We knew it couldn't be because of the time constraints that we had to act per the council's direction.
Yeah. I would, I would be uncomfortable with this ordinance if all different people in the department, Housing Department, could make these arbitrary waiver decisions. But knowing that it's only going to be the department head, you have consistency and you have a very reliable woman who can give it a test of sanity to each question per waiver.
Are you asking for her to come, or no?
We could introduce and still have her come here for the meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I would, okay, but...
I...
May I say something, Council President?
Shouldn't it be you answering?
Ma'am, I don't know if I know you or not. Please don't take this the wrong way. But in the 12 years I sat up on this council, okay, when you say the bane of existence, I spent 30...
Maybe paying.
Well, I still, ma'am, ma'am, this is my turn to talk now.
Okay.
Okay. I take exception to that, okay? And I'll tell you why. I grew up in Dartmouth Village 32 years. My mother's there 42 years, okay? From my whole time I've been on this council and what I've heard in town, it seems like the apartments are slums. I know the mayor's grew up in an apartment complex.
So have I.
Okay, but as far as what we're talking about here, okay, and I had an exterminating business. I've seen what these apartments used to look like. It's a difference of night and day. Do they still have improvement? Absolutely. But to have the rigid laws that we have and no relief for certain people with financial problems, or a woman having a baby, I have no problem. I trust Rena Plax, I trust Jennifer, excuse me, the department head Jennifer Collins into making these decisions, okay? Do I think it's going to open the floodgates and address your fears? Absolutely not. And you know what? Like the council just said, if we need to make adjustments, we will do so. But again, I got to tell you, I take exception to the word "bane of existence." That's my, thank you.
Jasmine?
I just wanted to say that I don't think Jennifer Collins is the right person to answer questions about the ordinance. She didn't write the ordinance. She's, you know, she's going to be granting the waivers, but she's going to be doing that based on the advice of council.
That's correct.
Mr. Mesmer?
I looked at it.
Roy Mesmer, Tendromon Drive. Well, there seems to be, Mike DiPiero, I know you've had a lot on your table with this cap'n situation. This doesn't deal with the situation when you and John Fox went around with George Kim at that one house in Sudsfield. Do you remember that election?
That was one of them.
No, no, let me, this is, let me read, because I don't think you've read this, sir. "The applicant shall certify a form to purbodied by the Division of Housing that he or she has sent to complete the application for a waiver to the landlord. This has nothing to do with the condition of your house." Please read, okay? Now, the other thing, what Mr. Vigilante is saying tonight, we are not going after the tenants. You and I had this discussion when you were here four or five years ago. Let me just continue now, because my third minute is going to go fast. I'd also like to pass these on to the members that are here.
...residents. There's 14 of them. I got it counted. Let's deal with it.
Kay.
So much for integrity.
Let me give you an example with waivers. We talked about police tonight. One of the Parsippany police officers, hypothetical, pulls over a couple right here at the light, pulls them over for speeding or going through the light, pulls them over and sees that there's a child in the backseat, under two years old, doesn't have a car seat, gives them a ticket for that. The driver of the car goes to court and pleads hardship case. We going to give him a hardship case for that? Absolutely not. Safety of a child. That's what this comes down to. The fine resident in this town, Bob Who Spoke, and Kitty, that's what they're just talking about, is the welfare and safety of this town. And that's been a big discussion here tonight. There is a God for Roy Mesmer. Last week, you pulled this ordinance. What happened the next day? Fire in Woodbridge. This fire was at 3:00 a.m. The police chief, which, I mean, the fire chief, which I'm going to get to, said it probably would have been 100 deaths. See the condition of that fireman there? The next day, another article about this. I don't know how many apartments are in Woodbridge, but there probably just about as many as we have here, if not more. We've been very fortunate, ladies and gentlemen, that we have not had a major fire here, correct you, Mayor? I mean, not just during your tenure, but your 50 years living here. Let me read you this now. This is from the fire chief of Woodbridge. This was online. This is not made up. "No one was injured in the fire at Woodbridge, but the firefighters had to gut two buildings after the blaze tore through, making them uninhabitable. It's too early to tell, but there has been issues with overcrowding in the past. When people pack a space with, they use more electricity, hook onto wires, which could lead to issues." And there was occupancy issues at this complex over the years. Again, ladies and gentlemen, the policemen are paid. Our firemen are not paid, and they put their lives on the line, too. What I'd like to bring up to, not Jimmy Vigilante didn't run with this crew, but here's your platform, your seven-point platform that you mailed to, I guess, everybody in town. Let me read number 70. I won't go through. "Strongly enforce occupancy ordinances. Stop stacking." That was you, Creve, you, Stanton, you, Farrar, you, DiPiero. "A separate letter, only signed by Council President Brian Stanton." I'll just read you the last paragraph, and I addressed this with him privately once before. "I have worked tirelessly, committed to continue to work and stop stacking. Nobody's worked harder than me. This past weekend, I put two and a half hours in on Sunday and an hour and a half last night. I even ran to that accident up there, Cherry Hill Road." I could, how much time do I left?
Uh, one minute.
Great. I don't think I have anything more to say on this. I've pointed everything out I want to, but I'm glad I have another minute. Because this is what bothers me. Mayor Luther had asked the, this is back to the police situation with our staffing, asked back in April 2010 for a report from the Department of Consumer, Community Affairs to do a management study of our police department. Chief Peckerman was the police chief here at the time. Not that I became close with Peckerman, but just for the record, he lived the same neighborhood as me, saw him all the time. Said in here, I'm not going to go into detail, but I've outlined it, two captains. Now, what has changed in two years?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. The other thing that I want to point out is, to tell you the truth, I lost my train of thought here on this. Oh, Mayor, you did say last week, and there was many of us here, that you were going to have a discussion on it. What happened between you and Mike behind closed doors is irrelevant. The other council people brought it up. You did say it publicly, and I think the public has a right because, yes, you guys are taxpayers too, but we flipped the bill also. Thank you. My pictures, please?
113. Down the street.
14.
Walked him into the room. Ready up.
And Roy, just real quick, your comparison to a child sitting in the backseat of a car without a seat has to throw a child out on the street? Not even close.
Hardship, I was talking about. You're not throwing a child out on the street.
What are you doing with him then? Have him stay in the apartment, throw the parents out?
What did you say?
I'm just saying.
You want to have a discussion? Stricter stacking?
That's what a waiver's for.
Jerry Manning Rainbow Lights. Let me begin by saying that Mr. Kevi tonight sounded like Mr. Simpson accusing the mayor of having puppets. I think that's beneath the dignity of a town councilman. My feeling. The discussion about the police department and what happened tonight with the promotion, you have to relate it to what the mayor had said. There are many, many, many towns in this county, in this state, who do not directly vote for a mayor. They vote for a council or a committee, and the committee picks the mayor for a one-year In this town, we vote for a mayor for a four-year term, and there's a reason for that, because that person has to make the tough decisions. And that's what Mr. Barbario did in this situation. I hated to see, sitting back there tonight, listening to the political harangue that went on, because it had nothing to do with the decision that the mayor makes. That's why he's elected. You have chairmans of the board, you have presidents of companies. The reason they're there is to make those tough decisions. Period. That's it. Now, the other thing I wanted to, that's been bugging me, the decision to let ShopRite sell booze bugged me from the very beginning, mainly because I shop in ShopRite, not here, but up in Wharton. And they sell booze in a separate piece of the store with a separate gate with hours of 10:00 to 10:00. The gate is closed until 10:00 a.m., and it closes at 10:00 p.m. My problem with the way this ShopRite situation took hold is this. Who's going to police every aisle in the store that has some piece of booze, whether it be beer, wine, or hard liquor? We all know that people, I'm not pointing fingers, people in general, walk up and down the store. Mommies have little kids screaming. She'll grab a box of cookies and give them a cookie while they're walking around the store. What happens if somebody walking around the ShopRite picks up a bottle of booze, cracks it, and takes a drink? Do we have a policeman in the store to see that? Because that is against the law. I had a friend, Billy Bullwinkle, owned a liquor store, and he's the one that told me, "You cannot open any alcoholic beverage in the place you bought it. You need to go outside. If you get caught doing it inside, they can shut you down for anywhere from a month to a year." So who's going to be the policeman in the ShopRite down here that lets people walk around and drift in between the aisles of the booze? That's my situation.
Just a comment on, at ShopRite, the alcohol is not up and down all the aisles. If you've been there, it's pretty much secluded in one area, and then, no, no, can I finish, please? And then you walk around and they have displays all over. But the hard liquor pretty much is in the one.
Is there a cop there?
Security, yes.
And what does security do?
He watches the store, security.
They have cameras on every aisle. They have two, at least two, two security people at all times.
That if somebody cracks a bottle, that they're going to get shut? Are we going to shut down the store? That's my question. Are we going to shut down the whole ShopRite? If somebody gets caught doing just what I said? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that person, that person will probably be caught and arrested. ShopRite, ShopRite is not in the, in the business of losing money or allowing thefts. They do everything they can to prevent them and to prevent people from doing things in the store that they shouldn't be doing. That's why they have security there.
Can you please use the microphone, please? Thank you, sir.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Michael, you're missing the point. It's against the law to open it. My question is who's policing it? And don't tell me security, because ABC Security hires guys right out of jail.
I'll back away from that one.
Okay. Anybody else got an answer to that? I guess not. I'll have to talk to the chief. He probably has an answer.
Thank you.
See nobody else come further? I'd like to close the public session.
Did I use up all my time?
No, you can't come back up after, sorry.
On a different topic, you can't come back?
It's one time, five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the Township Council, be approved by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion of these items. Unless a council member's a request, which case the item be removed from the Consent Agenda, considered in its normal sequence of agenda. Motion by myself, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Kevi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
I'm going to recuse myself because I have not been here for a lot of these discussions.
Okay, ordinances for introduction?
Wait, you?
Yes.
Didn't you bow?
Ordnances for introduction. 2012 colon 30, Mr. Farrar.
Motion to grant the request for funding of a group home, oh, this, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. He gave so many, I forgot which one I was doing. Ordinance number 2012 colon 30, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of 5 Vehicles and Traffic Section 22 through the streets and Section 24 multi-way stop intersection of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on July 17, 2012. And said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on August 21, 2012 at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or as soon as thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
I'm coming, I'm coming. Mr. Kevi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. 2012 colon 32, Mr. Vigilante.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, approving restrictions on maximum occupancy of residential units. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on July 17, 2012, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting be held on August 21, 2012 at 7:30 prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance.
Second.
Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Go ahead. Motion by Mr. Kevi, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Kevi?
I'm going to say no, because I believe it was said by Mrs. Crystal. I think the way this is drafted up here, it's going to open up a can of worms, and it is going to increase the possibility of more stacking in our township. So I will say no.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. 2012 colon 32, Mr. Vigilante.
An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, authorizing a lease agreement between the Township of Persippany Troy Hills and Persippany Soccer Club, Inc. Be it resolved, the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, held on July 17, 2012, and that said ordinance... July seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, at seven-thirty PM, prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved, the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vigilante, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Creve?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Add-on resolutions. Mr. DiPiero, if you would.
All right, first I'll make a motion. We have five add-ons, so I'll make a motion to add them to our agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Vigilante. Roll call.
Mr. Creve?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Now, we're going to read these by title only?
Just title only, yes. There's copies of them.
Okay. Motion to approve consent to proposed water quality management WQM plan amendment.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Creve?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?